Good evening, everybody. I'd like to reconvene the public portion of our regular city council meeting Tuesday, September 1st. Will you please all stand and join me in the pledge of the flag?
Pledge of the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, earlier tonight, the council met in closed session. The first item discussed was conference with real property negotiator, and I'd like to report that direction was given to the city negotiator. The second item was pursuant to California Code Section 54957, performance evaluation of our city administrator, and discussion is continuing on that item. The next item will be approval of the agenda, and there has been a request to remove item number one on the regular agenda. Is there any further request by the council or members of the public to have an item removed? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the exception of regular item number one.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved in second. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item is staff updates. We've all received a validated staff report. Is there any member of the council that wishes to comment or have questions on it? And I'll begin to my left with Councilwoman Foerl.
No.
Councilman Sobin?
I'm looking forward to meeting the new fire chief. I understand he's on vacation, is it?
Yes.
So, other than that, I have no comments. Councilwoman Morris?
Yeah, I'd like to recognize one of the things on here. Public Works employee Joe Kitchell stopped to pick up some roadside trash and found an envelope with $600 inside. With extra effort on his part, he located the rightful and very grateful owner and returned the money. Way to go, Joe. I just want to make sure we let the public know that we have employees with high integrity and moral standards. I'm proud of Joe for doing that.
You certainly can agree with that. I have a couple of comments. Beginning under the report of the Community Development Department, Dave, you don't have to get up. It's simply a comment. You've been very busy. There seems to be a lot of pending construction activity, a lot of discussion, a lot of meetings ongoing, and I think that's good news for all of us, and I'm pleased to see it happen. Question under Engineering Public Works, and maybe Dave can answer it, maybe Michael. Where you're talking about when crews go out and install the residential fire sprinkler lines because it's a requirement under the new fire code, so that means that the water main has to be tapped out in the street, a new line brought into the property line, a new meter set, is that correct? And who pays for that? Does the property owner pay for that, or is that something the city pays for?
I'll probably, I'll get back to you as far as who pays for it. I believe it's the property owner that pays for it. Don't hold me to that. I'll clarify that. But the nature of the connection just depends on the connection itself. So depending upon where the meter is, and if the line is not in the street prior to the meter, then we have access to the water line prior to the meter where we can put a tee and install another meter, which is what occurred with the one that was reported.
Oh, okay.
But again, I believe that the extra service line is paid by the owner for that.
Okay.
So it's a dedicated service line for just fire protection?
Yes, and that is part of the new state building code.
Okay, I got you.
Is there a fee to the homeowner for that dedicated line?
Again, I would have to clarify that, that I believe the fee is borne by the property owner as part of the connection fee.
I mean, ongoing though with a separate meter, is there a separate fee in the water bill, or is there?
There's no separate fee on the water bill.
Okay. That was the only questions, comments I had on the staff report. Unless there are further comments, we'll move to council updates, and this time I'll begin on my right with Councilman Behill.
I have no reports.
Councilwoman Morris?
On August 20th, I attended the museum admission meeting, and I just wanted to report that Saturday in the Mines will be coming up on September 19th from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and it's a free family festival that'll include live music, and there'll be food, and historical exhibits, stamping, and artisan demonstrations, and special guest exhibitors, hands-on activities for the kids, and kickoff is at 11:00 a.m. with the recognition ceremony. For 12 outdoor design, interpretive designs that were sponsored by the natives of, sons of the Golden West. That's all I have.
Okay. Councilman Sobin?
Okay, I attended the regular staff meetings for Utica Water and Power. I also attended their board meeting on the 25th. It was a routine board meeting, nothing special to report. And then on the 28th, I attended a Integrated Regional Water Management Authority special meeting for Councilman Behill, who was not able to attend. The purpose for the meeting was to approve a letter to be sent from the IRWMA to Yosemite Stanislas Solutions, YSS, in support of an application that they're making for restoration, for funds to help restore the watershed mostly affected by the rim fire. And that was approved unanimously. That's all I have.
August 19th, I attended the 49th advisory, and August 20th, I attended the CSED meeting in Shannoy, which is the central economic development. And that's all.
Thank you. Likewise, on the 19th, I also attended the Highway 4 and 49 Advisory Council meeting, and during that meeting, we, the main items were review of, summary of the outcomes of the previous public meeting, and then we reviewed the recommended solutions to be presented at the next public meeting, which will be a week from tomorrow night, Wednesday, September 9th, at the Brad Hart Union High School. The room within the high school has changed. It will, the meeting will take place in the Learning Center. I don't know where that is, but I'm sure there's going to be plenty of signage and people helping direct people to the right place. That meeting will start at 5:30 to 7:30. On the 20th, I have attended the Commemorative Committee meeting, which the discussion focused around amending their budget to reflect the actual funding received through the city budget process. Likewise, on August 24th, I attended the DAC, Destination Angels Camp Executive Committee meeting, and likewise, discussion focused about, around amending their work plan and budget to reflect the final funding provided by the city. And that's all I have to report. The next item on the agenda is public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council. On any matter not on the agenda, state law prohibits the city council from acting upon matters not listed on the agenda, and matters raised by the public will be automatically referred to staff or placed on a future council agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council at this time? Please come to the podium and state your name and address, if you would.
My name is Monica Parker, and I'm at 311 Live Oak Drive in Angels Camp. I am the president of the Mark Twain Elementary Parent Club, and I'm also the co-coordinator of the Angels Camp Gold Run. So we're just getting ready to launch the second annual coming up on September 27th. I wanted to come tonight to formally invite each of you to come be a part of the event. I've got some VIP passes for you. You don't have to run or walk in the event, but if just, if you'd like to just come be at the start of the race, it's really exciting, great energy, and it just shows what we're doing for the community. In this little packet is the VIP pass and a really fun map of the route, and also some Angels Camp information. These were also mailed out to all of the radio stations and all of the news stations that were trying to pull the media to Angels Camp for the event. So those are for you guys. And then last year, the event brought in over $10,000 for our school, and so I just wanted to let you know how some of that money went back into the campus. We spent $4,462 to send kids on field trips. We spent $1,382 on a music program. iPads and iPad covers were purchased for the primary grades, which cost us $4,484. PE equipment, we spent $1,138. We bought staff and yard duty supplies for $450. Reimbursed teachers for classroom supplies for $800, which brought our total of giving back to the Mark Twain campus to $12,716. So we're really excited about this year's event. We've tweaked a few things and fine tuned it, so we hope it's going to go even better than it did last year. And we look forward to seeing you at least at the start of the event so that you can see how it all goes down. Can I approach and ask?
Absolutely. Great, Monica. Well, I know you've been meeting extensively with our police department, our Public Works Department, our administrative people, and it sounds like it's a well-coordinated event, fine tuning what was actually a pretty good event last year.
It was received very well by all, I think, and the city staff has been great to work with, and we look forward to the event this year. So hopefully it will be a success again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Sherri, please come forward.
Hello there, Sherri Smith, 676 McCoy Ranch Road, Camps Restaurant. I actually saw the agenda and was compelled to come because I wanted to know what was happening with the lane, or Yvonne Martin's property, but I see the camera, that's what got me looking at the agenda. And then I got to thinking that I really didn't stand up last week, and I wanted to address a couple of budgetary issues about the ACBA and ACCC and the events. And I do so, I'm compelled because, first, thanking the city council in advance for the valiant effort of representing our city and all of the people. And I think that many, many months, many, many years ago, the most honorable position people could have in the city was right, was sitting on the city council. So I still, I still think that. And you put a lot of time and effort into things that you don't necessarily get a lot of benefits from besides the honor of doing so. I've been chairman of Angels Camp Business Association for 10 to 12 years, and, and I, I do so to help support the city. And really, there was an article in the paper, and really it just focused in on some budget cuts, which were some pretty low amounts to help us operate from our standpoint. I'm embarrassed I didn't stand up that day also, because a lot of people did, and, and kept jumping up and down and up and down trying to defend DAC, ACCC, ACBA, and, and I got to thinking, Ray, if Angels Camp goes to war, I want her to be in charge. So, and as we all pursue forward trying to operate our businesses, I'm just compelled to step up here. 10 to 12 years ago, there wasn't a museum that was operational, we started with our Conherities, there wasn't a farmers market, ACBA, and the chamber started back downtown in Yonka, there wasn't a Taste of Calaveras, there wasn't a Fourth of July celebration, there wasn't a Gold Rush that started on, it was Heritage Day and kind of kept moving on. And then, so those are the community pride projects that really keep our community together and make us the unique city that we are. And now we have, I know 104 Mark Twain Run, which is fabulous also, which we wholeheartedly support, and we challenge you to run in it also. The recent, or in the last couple of years, the strategic plan that Michael McCattan also helped us look through, we've set goals, short and long-term goals, which we have really reached lots of them. Our budget requests also were truly for our community, community services, and to help civic improvement. The downtown landscaping, the outline lights, the Christmas activities, and we want to put cans on the countertops to collect pennies from every little business to manage that event. That certainly isn't really our intent. Our goal is for ACBA to promote the city PR, develop and organize, energize, keep local people informed, promote and facilitate, and cultivate our uniqueness. Help position Angels Camp in Calaveras County, the Gold Rush, the Motherlode, California and the region. We support the Angels Camp Commemorative Committee, two events that we have, the Fourth of July Celebration, which is fabulous, and also the upcoming and exciting Gold Rush. And all the flags that are downtown, those were beautiful coming through town. So it sort of served as being a catalyst for lots of those, those entities. Paint the Town Red is actually our theme for, for the Christmas events. And we have a real great opportunity this year with Mark Twain's 150th anniversary, which is the weekend of the parade. It's just a great opportunity for us to promote beyond just our region, something unique in our area. And we do have the movie, the DVD, Where Mark Twain Finds His Foils, that's also been on PBS, and we do have a new book that's been launched, that's, it's quite well researched and quite well written. And so that's really exciting for our community. So we can take this opportunity for, with the Gold Rush event, which Mark Twain is, is a focal point of, and then also continue to celebrate it with the parade and with the Christmas activities. And so, let's see, other than that, we'll continue to action. We will even push a little bit. We will need your help, just like you need our help a little bit. And we want to help make the city look good. That's what we're here for. We want to make you look good, and we want to make you look good. So that's all I have to say. If you have any questions about anything.
Any questions?
Well, we intend to have a guitar, and I didn't bring a sign-up list for you to volunteer for the Gold Rush days. You can set up, you can clean up, you can break down tables and chairs, linens, you can sing, so, and then we need help for the rest of the events during the parade and ongoing. So thank you very much.
Didn't you already send out an email to that effect? Ask any of the volunteers?
We have an amazing number of people involved in organizations such as the Angels Camp
Business Association, Commemorative Committee, Destination Angels Camp, and I am confident that the events will go on, and they will be as good as they have been in the past, even with limited resources. We have that kind of talent here. Candy, did you have a comment?
My name is Candy Myers. I'm president of the Angels Camp Business Association, and I came here today actually not to speak. I did not know Sherri was here. Sherri didn't know I was coming. I just drove by, just leaving work, that's why I'm in uniform. But I just wanted to then stand up and say that we, we have, a press release came out today, and I believe there's even another one that is coming out. And I just wanted to say that we, we are not pointing or, or trying to make this, the city council in any way sound like responsible for, for possibility of canceling Christmas. I've actually, we've worked very hard, and I've worked hard, to make sure it did not sound that way. We, we do not think of you as the Grinch's that, that are trying to steal Christmas from Angels Camp. And, and we do support, we understand your, the budget cuts. I, we all sat here and watched what the city itself gave up in your budget cuts, not just, you know, for our organizations. And so I just wanted to say that. And we, we are going forward with trying to put on Christmas. We, we sent out a press release that hopefully you didn't take wrong, and we're trying to just get that momentum going to get the whole community involved in saving Christmas. And yes, we are going to put cans, we've already got cans ready to go to put on counters, whatever it takes. And I gave my personal check already, and so, but, so we've already got some promises, and we've already raised $80. And that was before the first, our first dear comment came out in the, in the papers. So anyway, I just wanted to say thank you again to the city council and keep up the good work. And we're trying to make you look good, and just make the whole community and our business association, not a business association, our businesses that are part of our association and part of Angels Camp, look better and be more successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Candy.
Thank you for that.
Anybody else wish to address the council at this time? Okay. All right, with that, we will move on to the consent calendar. There are three items on the consent calendar. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting of August 18th. Approved Resolution Number 15-30 issuing a notice of completion for the State Route 49 sidewalk project. And third item is clarification of the recent chlorine byproduct, by, exceedance. Anybody in the audience or on the council wish to remove one of these, or one or more of these from the consent calendar?
Okay, clarification. Wasn't, we just received our water bill, and in that was a insert that's on this, am I mistaken, about the purpose of that one?
Yeah, it, it was.
A one-page insert that talked about just various.
Just various issues.
I just want to make sure I understood. Basically, other than that, I have no comment.
Okay. Yes, Mary.
Elaine pointed out an error in minutes, did I look correctly? There's a certain point, a motion was made during the budget payments for an amount of debt, and I have transcribed.
Transcribed.
Elaine is voting no, but she did not, can't believe that we spoke of you voting no.
Okay.
Final, so I changed that, but then I will have a correction for that.
Okay. Well, then, all accept a motion on the consent calendar with the exception that Mary will correct what she just described in the minutes.
So moved.
Seconded by Councilwoman Morris, seconded by Councilman Behill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we've already pulled item number one on the regular calendar. So the next item is number two, approving resolutions consenting to inclusion of the City of Angels properties and the California Home Financing Authority PACE programs, and associate membership in the California Home Finance Authority. And Michael, if you'll give us a brief summary?
Actually, this is where I will pass the baton on to the certified smart person in the room, and I'd like to introduce Terry with Y Green Energy Fund.
Oh, okay.
I, by no means did I create the staff report. I just put my name to it, but Terry can speak to this issue and talk about the PACE program and how it works.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Terry Fennessey. I work for Y Green Works. We are here to look for the City of Angels Camp to opt in to the PACE financing program, which is an acronym for Property-Assessed Clean Energy. It allows your constituents to voluntarily finance energy efficiency improvements on their property through doing a self-assessment, which gets placed on the tax rolls. As, as we know, our property taxes are paid semi-annually, so they'll be paying their payments on a semi-annual basis. The, the components that eligible measures are many. You can do it both for residential, you can do it for businesses, you can do it for agricultural, and you can also do it for industrial properties as well. They can finance up to 90% of the assessed property value, and they can finance all the closing costs in there, so it's no money out of pocket. There is, you can do solar, which can do up to 30 years on solar. You can do, then from that point down, you can go down to 20 years, 10, 15, 20, 15, 10, and five years if the client wants to. Again, this is a voluntary program. This is not mandatory. The outreach is going to be through the business associations. It's going to be through, you don't have a builder's exchange here in this county, but through the chambers of commerce, and outreach to, me personally, outreach to contractors in, in your area, and trying to keep as, as minimal as possible the outline contractors coming in and swooping in, and trying to keep as much as the dollars inside the city and also the county as possible. That's, that's really my intent. This is my, my area, along with my associate Keith Rutledge, and both of us have been involved with Energy Upgrade California, which was a program that is still ongoing. It's a PG&E program. I utilized that program and did a tremendous amount on my house three years ago with Energy Upgrade California. Clients can do a very simple application with a contractor. They can get approved at their business or at their residence online, and the contractor can begin, they get a notice to proceed, and they can begin the process of, whether it's HVAC, air, air conditioning, low, zero, zero landscaping, because we have real serious water issues. And I noticed that you had a flyer out at the city hall regarding, it looks like a meeting about various water conservation issues coming up, where it looked like Supervisor Neto is going to be one of the speakers of that particular meeting. So these are opportunities for your constituents with your, with your approval to, to utilize and, and offset their energy expenses.
Great. Yes, sir.
So this is financed through the property tax bill, and it's called a tax. Is this tax deductible as well?
Yes, it is. Absolutely, it is.
So, so, and so someone wants to, solar, what about artificial lawn, something like that, that qualify, that can go, they apply all costs, nothing out of pocket, it goes on the property tax bill, and it's paid off over a determined term?
Whatever the client would like to do, whether they want to do five or 30 years, they can certainly do that.
And then if the, once it's paid off, it just drops off the tax bill?
That's correct.
And it's transferable to a new owner?
That is correct.
So if somebody wants to decide to fix up their house and put all on the tax bill, that would, interesting.
They certainly could. Yes, sir.
How does the, you mentioned turf, how does what you propose compare to the Department of Water Resources turf grant or rebate program?
It's a good question. I don't have that information in front of me. I don't know what their limitations are, what their requirements are. You know, I can't speak to it, I'm sorry.
Okay.
If, if you have some parameters, I can give some options to it, but.
Well, as I understand it, it's up to $2 a square foot, maximum $2,000 rebate.
Okay.
You have to submit an application with photographs.
Sure.
And then get approval before your contractor starts work.
Okay.
And it has to be then completed within 120 days.
Okay.
That's about what I know.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm a big advocate of all varieties of programs. Matter of fact, with the PACE program, a client could do Energy Upgrade California, and they could utilize the Y Green financing. They can also. could utilize the Y Green financing. They can also utilize rebates and tax incentives and stack those up. There's not really a limitation. If you, if you're stacking, uh, a local retailer selling, uh, an appliance and being able to utilize those rebates, they can, they can combine those in, uh, to reduce the cost of the associated with the improvement.
You've answered my question, basically. There's no conflict between these various programs?
No, sir.
Can be combined.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I believe Councilwoman Morris had a question?
Yeah, I had a question. Um, these are, these PACE programs are going to be under legislative authority. Um, why would, why would you need to form a Mellow Roos in order to, to participate in this, or be in, uh, another, the Improvement Bond Act of nineteen eleven and include the entire city in, within the boundary?
Well, uh, the way it's set up is that each district, each county, and each, only if we have the, with the county opting in, uh, we can only deal with the unincorporated areas of the county. The incorporated areas also have to opt in as well. Uh, we are going underneath the Mellow Roos. We also are using, utilizing AB eight eleven as well. Uh, the reason we're using, uh, Mellow Roos is because when, when it's on the tax rolls, it's the amount, when we get, when the person will get their tax bill, it's just the amount that's going to be owed at that particular time. It's not, they're not going to see a complete, complete amount.
It's a thirty-year...
That's correct.
Loan under Mellow Roos. But there are a lot of other things that can be used under Mellow Roos. This is only one section, five three three one three point five I and five three three two eight point one A, which, which is the, um, what you're talking about here, the, uh, energy improvements or...
Mm-hmm.
But if the city becomes, has a Mellow Roos, they can do everything that, within the boundaries of the city, and the, and the residents will be paying a tax on what it, there are a lot of things that the Mellow Roos, I think this is just an add-on. So we have to join, we have to make this Mellow Roos act in, within the city. And we have to do that within the county.
You're opting in to the Golden State Financing Authority, which is formerly RCRC.
And they're the ones that will actually enact the Mellow Roos. The city won't have anything to do with it.
That's correct.
This, only this part of it.
That's correct.
But the city on its own can do something else.
Oh, no question about it. Uh, this particular program does not allow, uh, city or municipalities to participate with this particular PACE program at this particular time. But the city can certainly do, uh, with inside their, their buildings and their structures, they certainly can utilize Mellow Roos to do energy efficiency improvements. No question about it. Yeah.
And, and it would be, who would pay for that part? The citizens?
The city would. If they, if they so chose to go and change out, uh, their air conditioning units with inside their buildings.
Well, it would be passed on to the citizen, I believe.
It would be a direct assessment.
Yeah.
Everybody that participates would have a direct assessment.
Yeah, but that, that's not...
But there would be administrative overhead costs to administer the Mellow Roos. Whereas under this program, there is no cost.
There is, there's nothing.
There is no...
There is no cost to the city.
None. Underneath, underneath this particular PACE program, there is no, there is no cost to the city.
Outside of, outside of our time right now.
Exactly.
And that's it.
Yeah.
Excuse me. That's right. Councilwoman, if you had a question?
So the, the tax, is it going to be taxed to the owner or the property? Meaning, if the owner decides to sell their piece of land, did the ta, did that go with the next property owner to continue that?
It can.
Okay. So then the next property owner can select whether or not they want to continue into that program?
Well, then it would have to be paid off.
Okay.
That's, that's the thing. It would have to be paid off.
So it's taxed to the property for life?
Until it's completely paid off, yes. Yes.
Terry, clarification. I've, I've heard the word tax mentioned up and down.
Assessment.
It's a direct assessment, right?
It's a direct assessment, yes. Thank you.
And, and technically, direct assessments are not tax deductible. Is that correct?
Uh, that is, no. This is, this has tax deductibility.
I know it's paid as part of your property tax, just like we pay the direct assessment for colleges and schools and so forth, but...
It's a direct line item on your tax property bill.
That's right, it is.
It is. It's a direct line item.
Well, to further that question, what makes it tax deductible, or technically?
You're self-assessing yourself. You're, you're essentially self-assessing yourself.
Yeah.
And that, that is, you can use that. If you have the appetite, you don't have to utilize it. Uh, let's say somebody's on a fixed income, uh, and they're not itemizing on their taxes, uh, the, there's, there's nothing there for them to be able, they don't have a tax appetite for it.
Right. And I know you're not an accountant, I was just...
Sure.
What were we looking for, some kind of IRS code that says this particular thing is tax deductible? You know, we have big deals.
We can leave that, each individual tax attorney. I did have some additional questions.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you said the term can be as long as thirty years. Is there an interest rate with it?
Yes. Uh, it starts out, it's, uh, for five years, it's six and a half, and out of the thirty years, it's eight and a half percent.
Okay. So, uh, the, the applicant can, uh, structure the terms of the loan according to their own budget. There's no underwriting requirements. It's not income limited or... And, uh, there's no, uh, analysis to see that the property is not being over encumbered with debt?
There certainly is. Yes, there is. The, the maximum they go to is ninety percent of the assessed property value.
Not, not appraised value, assessed value?
Well, they, if, if we can work off an appraisal, if they have a current appraisal, we can also utilize that, because most assessed values are lower than where, where an appraisal would be. But if a client has an appraisal, we'll certainly take a look at that and utilize those numbers as well.
Okay. All right. And it is completely voluntary?
Yes.
So by approving this tonight, we are not imposing anything on any resident in the city. Unless they want to participate, there's no, uh, mechanism that forces them to participate?
None.
Great.
It enables them to participate if I understand correctly.
That's probably a better way to say it. By opting in, you're enabling the opportunity for that volunteered program.
Good. Okay. That's, that's important.
By way of background, um, there is a, a local contractor, and I won't give names, but he does a significant amount of work outside of the area currently through the PACE program in Bay Area cities. And he already told me in passing that he already has four or five clients that are very interested in this if this were to be approved.
Sure.
Because this is all he does.
Yep. So it's, it's really an economic development tool to have more energy conservation-type jobs in the community as well.
Yes, sir.
And maybe you can explain, why is it that it's so difficult to opt out once you're in? It looks like you're in for, for life, for as long as there's a bond or a, an assessment out there?
No, you, you can certainly opt out if you want to.
How does that happen?
The city can opt out, which means anybody that had utilized the program, it's still, they're still going to be paying on that improvement. But if the city doesn't, if the city comes to a point, they said, "Look, this is just not working out," you can opt out.
I read, I read in the contract one area, like, I don't have it right from me, but it talks about if the city, or if the member, associate, associate member fails to live up to the contract, it doesn't mean they can get out. And I'm wondering, what would we do to fail to live up to it if we really don't have anything to do?
That's, uh, I don't have an answer for you on that. It's more of a legal question that I don't have. I, I, I've never heard that one. Um, I don't have an answer for you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
But from my understanding, to opt out is just as easy as to opt in.
Yeah, yeah.
And again, you know, from my perspective, um, and I, and I mean this wholeheartedly, is that I'm, your clients just as much as the property owners are clients. Because if you're not, if, if your constituents are coming to you and saying, "This program is not working out for us," uh, that's not my intent. My intent is for your constituents to be able to say, "Yes, this is, this has worked out very nicely for us." And so that's, that's where, that's where I come into play. If you opt in, that's where I come into play, make sure that you all are happy.
I, I don't see people that are on a fixed income or low-income people being able to utilize this program. From things I've read, you have to have a, a good credit rating and be financially able to make the payment. So if it's on your property tax bill and you don't make your payment, then one happy.
Well, typically with most tax, uh, uh, bills, there's about a five-year time period before foreclosure can come into play, or the lender's going to keep those taxes current. Um, and, you know, it's, if, if they're not paying their bills, and we, we also classify that they've got to be current on their taxes currently for the past year. So they can't have overdue property taxes, otherwise they just don't qualify.
So they're not going to qualify?
Yeah.
Low-income people, I don't think, and people on a fixed income will be able to qualify. And those are the ones that you would think would like to utilize something like that.
Yeah. Well, let me, let me give some clarity to that. Uh, I'm on the board and I'm president of Renewable Energy Development Institute up in Willets. We have what's called the HELP program, Home Energy Link Program. And through Fort Bragg and the City of Willets, we provide, uh, low-income energy efficiency improvements for free. Okay? Uh, and so there are opportunities for that to happen. Now, in, in Calaveras County, I don't, I don't have, uh, an understanding of whether or not, like, North Coast Energy Services up in, uh, Mendocino County. And there are, they're the implementers of the part, portion of the HELP program. I know they're in Yolo, and I know they're in Solano, Mendocino, uh, and Lake County, but I'm, I'm just wondering if there's a, there's, I'm sure there's some sort of programs with inside Calaveras County that has, um, uh, energy efficiency improvements for low-income housing. I would think that there might, there would be, but I, I don't know a hundred percent for sure.
It seems to me that the dialogue is, is getting off-base here. What we're asking is for the city to enable people to take advantage of an opportunity to fund an energy conservation project through tax...
Assessment.
Assessment. Okay. Their choice still. But if the city doesn't agree to join this PACE program, they don't have that opportunity. It's not there. They have to go through normal means for financing, whatever they do. Okay? All we're doing by approving this, as I understand it, is to offer them another opportunity to...
It's a, it's an additional financing tool people presently don't have.
Right.
And whether they choose to avail themselves on that tool is entirely their own private decision.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Look, I still don't know why you have to form a Mellow Roos on the entire city.
It's not on the entire city.
The boundaries, I believe it says in it, it says all the properties. Um...
For them to have access to it, yes. You're, yes.
Well, I guess I would ask, what would be the harm of making the entire city a Mellow Roos district?
We already have Mellow Roos district.
Yeah.
Greenhorn Creek's a Mellow Roos district.
Right.
I mean, you have multiple Mellow Roos districts.
It's a land, it's a land, state, land district. It's not a Mellow Roos.
No, there is a Mellow Roos district for the improvements of Greenhorn Creek.
Well, that's for the, for the, the initial water, sewer, and all, and all that.
It's, it's a separate district.
All right. Well, uh, unless there's additional questions of Terry, I would open it up for public comment from the audience. Are there any in the audience that wants to speak to this item? Okay. Um, with that, um, unless there's additional council discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve, uh, agenda item number two.
I'll move that we approve, we're just talking about resolution fifteen thirty-one, are we not?
Fifteen thirty-one and fifteen thirty-two.
Both of them?
Yeah, right.
And then I will move that we approve resolution fifteen thirty-one and fifteen thirty-two as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve, uh, in short, uh, resolution number fifteen thirty-one and resolution number fifteen thirty-two.
Can we have a roll call?
Sure. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with, uh, Councilwoman Follin.
Aye.
Councilman Sobin. Okay. Councilwoman Morris?
No.
Aye. And I, I also vote aye. That passes on a four to one vote. And then, um, okay. Third item is approving a contract with Joseph Cogan Corp. Corporation to provide, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Provide an impact fee study for parks, police, and fire protection, as well as provide a traffic mitigate, traffic impact fee study as well. Yeah, Michael, are you going to have this?
Yeah. Mayor and council, you have, uh, the staff report and the recommendation to approve the contract. As, um, council's been made aware, the existing impact fee study for parks, police, and fire protection was last updated in two thousand and three, and best practices suggest that fee studies should be updated every five years, so we're a little bit beyond that threshold. And then meanwhile, the last update of the traffic mitigation impact fee study was in two thousand and ten. But that comes with a caveat, because we've had recent developments with regards to the traffic study, including, uh, council's approval of a, uh, street A alignment in the northeast quadrant of four and forty-nine, as well as the current undertakings with the partnership planning grant in the northwest quadrant of four forty-nine. Uh, Joseph Cogan, uh, was the consultant for Maximus Inc. for the last impact fee study, and he was one of several proposals that we received. Uh, Maximus Inc. no longer does impact fee studies. Um, and with that, Joseph Cogan Corporation was the lowest, um, and most responsive proposal for each study. Fifteen thousand dollars was budgeted for the Parks, Police, and Fire Impact Fee Study. While this proposal is twenty-seven hundred over budget, staff does not feel that a budget amendment is required at this time. If needed, staff would bring this, uh, as a budget amendment in the third quarter of the fiscal year. And then twenty thousand dollars was budgeted last year for the traffic mitigation fee study. However, staff, and that is aye, you got to carry that over or encumber the budgeted amount in the next fiscal year. Um, staff does feel as prudent to conduct the traffic mitigation fee study, and we recommend approving that portion of the contract as well. And again, if a budget amendment is required, we would bring that back to the council in the third quarter. And the if just depends on how we're doing at that time of year.
Any council comments? Questions?
No, I have completion date right after I remember seeing...
Um, you know, I have a good question. I'm going off his proposal that I think he was looking at a cradle-to-grave about a six-month time period.
Would be this calendar year?
Yes, absolutely. Will be within the fiscal year.
Question?
Um, is, would this be beneficial to wait until after four forty-nine is complete?
Yeah.
Or is there...
I have that same question.
What would be, what would be the negative of deferring this until the next year?
Um, would be, having four forty-nine defined doesn't necessarily, um, how do I say this? There's no benefit to waiting, um, because the process is the process, and, and a general selection of alignments will occur. It's just knowing the general selection...
It's just knowing the general selection of alignments is all he would need in order to start looking at those impacts. So, we have enough in place now for him to look at, no matter what the final outcome is of, of that alignment. So he can move forward now. But absent moving forward now, we're, we're kind of just spinning our wheels.
May I ask, Councilman Beal, are you concerned that taking this step would influence something with regard to the 449 corridor study?
And that's not a real concern. My concern is more budgetary, and I know it might be best practices to have them every five years, but what's, you know, during the budget talk, you know, you talk a lot about deferring things, and is this something that we can defer for another year? And also, just it seems like to me the more information that's available for projects we're already working on, that they can't hurt.
Well, can I, can I add one?
The only other thing I would add to that, there is some economies by way of about three thousand dollars for him doing both projects at the same time, so the price...
Play it's five thousand. If he does the traffic studies separately, the cost is fifteen thousand, three hundred.
Right.
Because if you put them under one boilerplate, one set of meetings, one set of research, there's a five thousand dollar savings.
Yeah, I would want to defer the whole, all of it, not just the traffic portion.
I would not advise that, but that, that's council's choice. We have developments that are coming in place that are essentially paying impacts that are now twelve years old.
Well, how does that affect our fee studies, impact fee studies, uh, for, that we're doing for sewer and water? I mean, isn't that going forward as, as, it's all going to come together as one package?
They're all coming together at the same... Well, they'll, it won't be done as one package, because they're, you know, I can't guarantee that the trains will arrive at the depot at the same time. As water and wastewater is ready, it'll be brought before council, just like as these are ready, will be brought before council, but we're, we're moving at the same time.
Yeah.
And, and again, it's, you know, thirteen-year-old money that we're collecting today.
So the negative impact of deferring any development meanwhile is paying a lower fee then?
And where you need, you know, again, you're, you're looking at items in the budget that you're paying parks, police, and fire for, as an example, upgrades to the police station and the fire station would be a general fund hit if there's no impact fees to pay for that. So that's where the impact fees would come from. Or park expansion, as, by way of example, Utica, not Utica Park, but Tryon Park, we're looking to expand that park. If we had impact fees, that would be a viable source to expand that park, as opposed to general fund. But right now, there's no impact fees available.
Amanda, you said you joined in that previous question. Is there additional discussion you had?
Just the demographics of, I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from with the parks, but just the demographics of the possibility of new businesses coming in. I mean, we're planning for it, but when they start actually happen, when, we're not really seeing that now, and it's harder for most businesses to even pay the fees. And if we do this impact study, and we do increase those fees, are they going to still be wanting to come? And unless it's a corporation that has the upfront money to pay those type of fees, smaller local businesses that want to come into town, are they going to be able to afford them? And that's where I'm kind of...
I, honestly, I don't see this as a hindrance to new business. Parks, police, and fire are mostly born by new development, new residential development. There's sometimes a component for industrial and commercial related to those, but most of that is, is residential, because a new business isn't bringing new people to town. So that, so the impact really is a park, police, and fire for residential. Now, for street impact fee, a new business coming in, they would have, would have to pay into the impact fee program. Mark Twain is a good example. The impact fees that they were going to pay would have paid for most of the, the 449 improvements that they have to deal with. So, and they're ready to move forward, but that item failed, not because of the impact fee, but because of the traffic mitigation issues. So I don't see this as, as having a great impact on business.
I would only add that if and when there is growth in this city, and we have to expand parks or expand our road system, there's a cost associated with that. So you either, the existing residents, the existing rate payers, either pick up the cost attributable to the new growth, or the developers or entity that is causing the new growth pay their own way. Either way, it, it's a, it's a cost. Putting, putting the burden on new growth to pay its own way is a more equitable approach. Now, anytime you talk to somebody from the building industry council, they'll say, "Impact fees are killing business in California and killing growth." I would disagree with that. Growth is going to happen, and as long as, and, and there has to be a nexus between the fee and the benefit created by the fee, so you can't overcharge for impact fees. The fees have to be appropriate to the cost of the, of either the road or the park or whatever. So, I, I don't think you can take the position that, that having an impact fee is going to drive growth away from this community. If it, if you don't have it, that means the existing residents. We're, each of us are going to be responsible to explain to the existing residents why their utility bill is going up because of a new subdivision that comes to town. And that's not defendable. Anything else?
No, I think the purpose of the report is to provide information to come to an intelligent level of fees. We do seem to have more building going on, so maybe if I have this report a year ahead of time or not deferring it, we might even save the twenty-seven hundred bucks in impact fees. And if the report is on, we can still adopt whatever fee level we want, but I would hopefully we're competitive with the county and with other cities nearby, and it's not a report that's going to compare us to, you know, the Bay Area. Hopefully compares us to other cities and what they're doing today. So if it just allows us to make an intelligent decision and to put the, you know, put the burden on where it should be, then, then I can support that.
And typically, an impact fee is relative to the cost to build the improvements. There is some comparative, but every city's built differently, and so to have a flat-line comparison on impact fees isn't, isn't really what they look at. It's just one component of what they look, look at. But in the end, the council ultimately would adopt the fee. They have to look at the improvements that are needed now and in the future as the city grows, and what those costs would be in order to arrive at that nexus.
Any other council, council comments? Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve a contract with Joseph Cogan Corporation to provide an impact fee study for parks, police, fire protection, and provide a traffic impact fee study as well.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Sobin, seconded by Councilman Beal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. All right, that concludes our business tonight, except for a report on the calendar.
Okay, I'm sorry. Tomorrow at six-thirty is Calaveras Council of Governments at the Board of Supervisors. Thursday at nine AM is Commemorative Committee, and that's going to be meeting every Thursday at nine AM from this point on until Gold Rush Day. Monday, the seventh, is Labor Day, City Hall is closed. On Wednesday, the ninth, at five-thirty, is the State Route 449 Gateway and Quarter Study Meeting at the Learning Center. I'm not sure where that is. Thursday, the tenth, is the Commemorative Committee and the Planning Commission, and then on the fifteenth, we are back here.
All right. With that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Move the seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, for adjourn.
Six apart?